There you go. That was what I was gonna ask for. I'd like to call the meeting to order. If we could all please rise for the salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just for all.
A little time delay there, okay. All right, first order of business. Commissioner Evans, do we have a opening comments from you?
A little one. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Our meetings are neutral ground, a place to hear and be heard. The Board of Commissioners is here to represent everyone in Cowan, and we strive to be sure our decisions address the needs of all, because we're all in this together. Just a reminder, only questions or statements regarding an agenda item will be entertained under Citizens to Be Heard at the top of the meeting. All other matters will be recognized during public comment at the end of the meeting. Lucky you, I still have residual COVID symptoms and can't talk much without coughing, so this will be really short. If you're not vaccinated, quit the debating society and get it done, please. You don't wanna, you don't wanna go through this. Emergency. Last night, the Board of Commissioners met with three local EMS providers, Minkwes, Washington, Hose, and Westwood. And they presented some things. This is on the wake of the loss of Brandywine Hospital and Medic 93. No decisions have been made yet, but we did come away with a better understanding of how to navigate a clear path towards ensuring all of our residents are served, that they are served equitably, and that it stays that way moving forward. I think, I could be wrong, but Ms. Denny may have more on that in her report. She really was on top of that's of the meeting last night. Fantastic. Do this a little bit here. Cleanup time. Social media was a buzz about parking on the grass fines someone received. The complaint on social media claimed that township went back on their word and told us we could park on the grass to get Dad in, and when we're finished, put it back in the street. If that claim were factual, it would be terrible. It would be inconsiderate, and it would be cruel of township, but it's not. The facts are that the township has had many issues with particular residents, including high grass and sanitary exterior property and parking on the grass. Our inspectors tried to work with them several times to avoid fines, and in this case, the vehicle was parked on the front lawn for days, not just long enough to get someone in and out. If the monitor, moderator of that social media site was aware of those facts, it would have been really nice if they had shared those facts on their site once they had them, rather than letting their followers rally and rage in support of a claim that is not true. It's called accountability, something I know we strive for here, so we don't always get everything right, but we work at it. Lastly, nothing is ever perfect, but Cowan Township is open for business. It's our township, our community, our home. Hashtag look out for Cowan. We can all be a part of the solution by eagerly spreading good news about where we live. Thank you.
Commissioner Evans, thank you very much. All right, next on the agenda, Citizens to Be Heard. These are for agenda items. Yeah, I'm sorry, your name and address. I'm sorry.
I can't hear what's going on in the room. I can't hear what's going on in the room.
Okay, is the mic working? Thanks, Mark.
If you could hold it. No, 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 they'll hold the button.
Hold, is it? Mark, can you hear anything?
Hello, okay.
There we go.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, now, yes, we've been parking on the grass, but we have been moving it at nighttime up on the street, which we were told by Mark and Ray. We parked down on the grass to pick up my dad because he can barely walk. He shuffled his feet. He had walked up to the street, but Reed Street is not what it is. He tripped over McAdam and fell. Luckily, he did not get hurt. You guys saying that you're supposed to repave Reed Street has been five years. We've been getting water coming into our basement and in front of our house, where he, where I, my parents, have to walk through four inches of water to get out of our house. And like I said, our car is not permanently parked on the grass. We move it. They went on an old violation back in December of 2021 to fine us, so we have to go to court to fight it. And we tried to talk to Mark. He said he denied, saying he never gave us permission. He, I heard it, my brother heard it, my mom heard it.
Mark, I'm sorry.
Mark, one of the code enforcers. I think his name is Mark. Okay, all the time we try to come in here, talk to somebody, oh, sorry, they're out of media. But they're standing right in front of us. They're pretending they're looking through their file cabinets. You see them snickering on their face, laughing. Sometimes I do talk to them. We get in an argument. Last time I, I mean, the last time I was in here, I got an argument with Ray about, I guess, tell us what we need done so we can take care of it. Because you don't lay out what problems need actually be fixed. I came in here and tried to ask him about that. He wanted to tell me, he said, tell it to the judge. That's what everybody says. Joe said that to us. Paul said that to us. Mark said it to me. That's their fake saying.
Paul, Paul who?
Paul, he used to work here. That was years ago, Paul. I think his name was Paul.
Paul that worked here, okay. I just wanted to clarify that, because I've never said that.
I think his name was Paul. I think it's game with P. I think it was Paul. I might have his name wrong.
Okay.
But he was harassing us about our vehicles that were registered and insured that we had to get rid of. And that's what Ray mentioned that day, saying that none of our vehicles were registered and insured. I said, what? He said, I have a white van. I have another van from the Chester County Association for the Blind, which my brother worked for, and my mom's red car. I said, they're all registered and insured. I had my car out in the park, and I go, Ray, you wanna come out there and look at my vehicle? He didn't want to go out there and look at my vehicle. He threatened to have me arrested by the town. Public property. I'm allowed to come in here if I'm having a problem and want to get the issue solved. And like I said, tell it to the judge. Finally, I left. My brother came back. He showed them their registration and insurance for the Chester County Association for the Blind vehicle. And he apologized for the interaction between me and him.
Okay.
I guess, I commit, I can get hot-tempered, but it seems like.
You and I, we've spoken before.
But it seems like we're being singled out by your code enforcement. We were, I was told by Mark that he drove past our house five times in one week, which I considered that excessive, and I considered that stalking. Why is our house being driven past five times in one week? And when he, and I seen him, I talked to him. He actually said that yes, we can park our vehicle down on the grass to get my dad as long as we bring it up and park it back on the street, which we have been doing.
Okay.
And, and I, wait, and I talked to Mark. And I talked to here. That parking on the grass has to be followed by everybody in the township, right? As businesses, as anybody, right? Well, can you tell me whose vehicle is this parked on the grass? I mean, can I show it to you?
Sure, sure, bring it up.
I would advise, since there is pending legal action, that we do not make.
We're not, we're not, no, we're not doing any legal action. We're not suing you. We're not.
No, sir, we have pending citations. We cannot comment on this.
It's not, no, it's not. It's not anybody else's. Whose vehicle is that?
I personally don't know.
It's your vehicle.
Okay.
Parked on your grass.
It's very difficult to see that seal there, sir.
You can walk out here right now. You can see that your own vehicle is parked on the grass, which is a code that you guys need, and you're not following it?
Here goes, sir.
I said, I'm trying to be a jerk by saying, everybody be treated equally.
Okay, if you can't, just back to the podium. So, well, no, only because of the microphone, the folks in the Zoom world can't hear you.
If you made the codes, you're violating your own code.
Sir, I don't think that's the issue here, okay?
But the issue is.
I know, and I don't mean to cut you off, and you know, you and I have spoken before about all this.
Yeah, we have spoken before, but we were given permission by Mark, by Ray, that we can park down on the grass to pick up my dad and bring, and bring the vehicle back up, which we have. Our car is not left down there.
Okay.
I, okay, now, I'm gonna try to make it simple, okay? From 13th Avenue to 17th Avenue, I counted 27 other vehicles parked on their lawn, grass high, all the street, parking on the sidewalks and on the grass. How is that overlooked? And other question I have, and other question I have also is, I was told that only residents can either file a complaint online or do it in person. Now, are the code enforcement people allowed to do, do it now? If they are out on the, out on the job to file complaints about residents, or no?
Are the code enforcement, if they are out and about and they find a violation, yes, they, sometimes, as I understand, they will leave you a note on the door, or if it's a repetitive item, and then they're gonna cite you for it.
Right, and I guess.
So as far as the parking in the grass, yeah, I mean, we, we've been down this road before, because, you know, some folks might park their boat for, you know, for the day or so, just before they take it to storage or whatnot. You know, all these circumstances are, are isolated. But if they do find your car that's parked there for several days or a week at a time in the same spot, this is where the citation would come from, and I guess we just need to find out a little more information from our codes department.
Right, but I said, he, I said, he wrote on our thing, saying that the vehicle was never moved. That vehicle has been moved. And on the original citation, it said, we have 20 days to handle it. We handled it within the 20 days, so if we didn't handle it in the 20 days, we would have had a fine.
Okay.
Now they're going, instead of writing new notice of violation, they're going back on all ones, and I think that's kinda sneaky and dirty doing that.
I think they're just trying to keep folks from parking on their car for periods of time, because what it does is it creates an issue in the ground for stormwater. And even my neighbor, I noticed that. He's, he was parking his vehicle there, and the rain would just come right down the street and just flood his entire front yard because of the ruts.
For people, though?
I'm sorry?
You make special exceptions for people?
No, it's not a.
Why would people, why would people?
There is a citation pending on this issue.
Was Reeseville High School given, was Reeseville Elementary School given a citation in Brandywine Hospital when they had the strawberry festival? Why were they allowed to park?
Sir, these are, these are for reasons to park in the parking. You're bringing up circumstances that are.
My dad can't get, get a special exception for his condition, why was Reeseville allowed to have?
Not to leave the car parked on the front lawn, but Ms. Denny has pointed out that there is legal.
Pending litigation.
Pending litigation, so I.
Can't comment. You know, you're more than welcome to speak, but the Board of Commissioners can't give.
And normally, I would wait until the end of the meeting, but I know you guys, you know, you.
I'm willing to stay here all night to issue it, but I think this citation should be dropped, because there's others that have, that are doing the same thing and have not been issued on.
And, and you are more than welcome. The Board of Commissioners cannot drop a citation.
They've done it in the past. They can do it. John did it. I said, Panic said, and we, I said, no one returns phone calls when we ask to talk to people.
All right, thank you very much. All right, any other citizens to be heard? Yes, Tony? Name and address.
Tony DeSario, 251 Loomis Avenue, Cowan. Not for me. My neighbor got scammed today. I know, I can wait to the end of the meeting if you want, but these people come out and sprayed her driveway like a week ago. And then they came here today, and the guy, you know, they said, I'm gonna get in trouble if you don't sign, if you don't sign this paper, so I can put a sign in your yard. So she filled out these papers, not thinking. She, name, address, print, signature. Yeah, so I just wanted the neighbors to be aware of people scamming it, and it was people that, she trusted them because they, they sprayed her, they did her driveway, sprayed her driveway.
So. If you could ask her to please call the police.
The police, I called the police. Oh, yeah, I told them to come out. You know, I was, she was hollering. I was weed whacking, so I didn't even hear her. So I didn't pay her no mind, but I just went to the neighbors or the residents to be aware that there's people going out and they're scamming.
What type of material, I mean, what did they have her sign?
I guess they wanted to put a sign in her yard. What they said was, they told her that they got in trouble for giving her a good deal. Okay, and they wanted to put a sign in their yard. It could be okay to put a sign in their yard, but she had to sign this paper. So the paper was her name. I don't know. She might have bought a boat. Who knows? I don't know what she signed, okay? I was just, you know, she was upset. She was really upset, really bad. So I just want the other ones, neighbors, to be aware that, I mean, I don't know how many, four or five people are listening, but, but there is a, you know.
But what did they take, what, what is the scam?
Well, they actually, actually came back and they went in the house. But she don't know if there's anything missing. She's older.
Right.
But she's an older lady, you know. But I just want the neighbors to be aware of.
Make a note to the police chief.
Well, that's, I mean, the report has to be made.
The policemen come out, two policemen come out. I think it must be new guys. I've never seen them before.
Okay.
And they walked over in the house with her, because she was over my house. So, so you're aware. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
President Mullins, since Tony mentioned it, you know, we have 12 people attending remotely, not counting Commissioner Kennedy and myself.
Thanks, Mark. All right, any other citizens to be heard in the Zoom world? Any hands raised?
No, not at this time.
Next on the agenda, Township Solicitor, Ms. Camp.
Hi there. Hi, the first one is actually something that Portnoy Associates, who does your collection work prepared. Actually, I don't have a copy of it, but I believe what, there was a change in the law, that there's another notice that they need to send when people have delinquent sewer and trash fees, and they're changing their fee structure just to make sure that they are able to collect that cost of doing that additional letter. You're required in your code to establish what the fees will be when you have an attorney handling the collection process, and I think they're updating in their ordinance, this ordinance, they're updating what those fees are. Kristin, I don't know if you want to add to that. I didn't.
No, I, I mean, it's, it's been reviewed. It's been advertised, you know. Portnoy has done an excellent job with us in delinquencies.
Yeah.
I agree.
You know, we, we could not have done, cannot do the type of work they do in-house.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if you guys are familiar with what they do, but that's all that they do, and a lot of the municipalities that we represent use their services. It's a fairly, somewhat straightforward process in the beginning, but then, you know, as the, as the property owners fail to pay, it gets a little bit complicated, and they're definitely the experts in the field. You're not the only municipality that are, that are being asked to adopt these ordinances to update the fee schedule, so that's all it really is.
At this point, I'll ask the Commissioners if they have any further questions. Not. Any questions from the residents?
None at this time.
Okay, if you don't mind, I'll just skip down to, for a vote. So, entertain a motion to consider ordinance 2022-05 approving the appointment of Solicitor Interest Assessment and Attorney Fees and Collection Fees added to the amount collected as part of the unpaid municipal claim for delinquent account. Am I reading that right?
Yep.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
I'm moved.
All right, moved by Commissioner Young, seconded by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Motion's good, 5-0. Next, we have the Act 57 legislation.
Yeah, this is something that's not before you for any action. It's just to bring it to your attention. A new law was passed in July. I guess there are circumstances where property owners are not, when, when property changes hands, if the new owner does not receive a copy of the tax bill and then fails to pay the taxes in a timely manner, they would be assessed under your, under the state law, actually. They're assessed a penalty for a late, you know, for not paying their tax on time. So what this law does is it gives them an opportunity in that circumstance to ask the township's tax collector to waive the late fee. So you are actually mandated, the Act, it's called Act 57, it will go into effect on October 11th of this year. 90 days after that date, you, you should adopt a resolution that basically establishes the procedures that Act 57 allows a taxpayer who fails to receive the tax bill and then fails to pay the bill on time. We prepared a draft resolution. You also have, unlike most municipalities, that you don't really see anything in your code book on late fees or anything like that, but your code book actually does have in Chapter 141, which is your taxation chapter, it does specify a late fee. So we, in addition to doing the resolution, which will direct the process to get the waiver for the late taxes, you also have an ordinance to amend Chapter 141, where it references the process for collection of late fees. We'll have to make that change, too. But we have some time. I just want to let you know, this was, this law was enacted, and it'll be coming down the pipe for you to adopt both a resolution and an ordinance.
Kristin, we do have the resolution on the agenda this evening. Would you like the board to just simply skip that, and we can bring that up another time?
That's fine. No, no, if you haven't already, that's fine. It's, it's fine if you want to do it before the timeframe to do it. Just know that we will have a subsequent ordinance to Chapter 141, a slight edit to that. But that's fine. They could adopt it tonight. I didn't realize that she sent you the actual resolution.
Yes.
Kristin Camp, just a quick question. Is this only when you purchase a property, or is this every year?
No, no, it's, I mean, it's any time where the property changes hands and the new owner fails to get the tax bill. I don't think it happens very often, because most property owners utilize a title service, and when you use title services or title companies that conduct the closing, your taxes are paid at the settlement table, and there's a proration between the seller and the buyer, so there's not going to be, I can't, you know, very few instances where this law is going to go into effect. But it's, no, it's not. It's when, anytime there's a transfer of property and the new owner fails to receive the tax bill.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and, and there are steps involved for the resident to apply for the waiver?
Yeah, you'll have, the DCED is going to put out a form that you can provide to a taxpayer who believes they are entitled to this waiver of a late fee, and your tax collector can give them that form that they fill out. They have to demonstrate to you. They sign an attestation that says they did not receive the tax bill. They provide you a copy of the deed that shows when they acquired the property, and then in those circumstances, they're entitled to the waiver of the late fee.
Commissioners, any questions on this? And then I will ask if there's questions from residents. Hands raised?
None in the Zoom audience.
Zoom audience. All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to consider the Resolution 2022-28, and this is establishing the process and procedures by which taxpayers may seek a waiver of late payment penalties for the real estate taxes set forth in Act 57, which amends the local tax collection law.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, seconded by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Motion's good, 5-0.
Next thing on, under my portion of the agenda is to discuss, if you're prepared, to continue the discussion of Historic Resource Ordinance. After the last meeting, I sent an email. I think there's four main issues to, to make sure we're all on the same page with. The first is just, again, making sure how we define and classify historic resources as either being a Class 1 or a Class 2. The only part of the Class 1 designation that I'm still questioning is it references the, one of the criterias, resources that are deemed by the Chester County Historic Preservation Office to meet substantially the National Register criteria. I wonder if we could just change that to be the Cowan Township Historic Commission? And if that's the case, and I think the way the Class 1s are being defined will work. I was thinking about that. I was looking at that before the meeting. I thought maybe that's a way to handle that one.
Oh, that's great, Kristin.
Okay, and then under Class 2, we still, you know, it probably could stay as it is, but I think it would, it could be a little bit more defensible if we define under Class 2. What it says now is, building, site, structures, and objects of significance to Cowan Township as determined and recommended by the Cowan Township Historical Commission that represent, number one, they don't qualify for Class 1, and then, two, they represent sufficient historical significance as to warrant in the judgment of the Cowan Township Historical Commission the protections offered by this article. It doesn't really say what the Historical Commission is looking at when it makes the judgment that, that something is historically significant. So I just thought it might make it a more defensible ordinance if we actually laid out what those criteria were. And I think, you know, there's other ordinances that define Class 1, Class 2, and it's up to you how you want to do that. I just, when I look at a county, see if I can find that piece of paper.
What about something that says historic place, person, or event for Cowan Township?
That's fine. So it was a location of a historic place, event, or person. That works. What do the other board members think of that?
I like it. Was that Commissioner Young?
Mm-hmm. Okay. I can incorporate that. I think that's good. The next discussion point. The next discussion point is, at the last meeting, actually, the last two meetings, we talked about this. We worked the section about the Historic Resource Impact Statement, and I think I have it down to what everybody was talking about in terms of when it's necessary to prepare one. So now, let me turn to that section.
What section is that, Kristin, when you have it?
Yeah, I'm trying to find it. So it's Section 608-7. And it's if, if the, if the property that has a Class 1 or Class 2 historic resource is, is the subject of an application for some construction, okay? Then, and it, it has to be something that's being constructed that's greater than 500 square feet in area.
Yes.
So if I own property, and on my property I have a Class 1 historic resource or a Class 2 historic resource, and I'm building something on my property that's greater than 500 square feet in area, then I would have to prepare the Historic Resource Impact Statement. That's the first circumstance. The second circumstance is, I, I own property that doesn't have historic resource, but I'm located within 500, no, I'm sorry, 300 feet of a property that does have a Class 1. I am building something that's greater than 500 square feet. In that circumstance, I would have to prepare the HRIS. And then the third circumstance is, I, my property does not have a historic resource, but I am located within 150 feet of a property that has a Class 2 historic resource. And it's actually, I didn't say, I didn't.
Reverse, yeah.
It's, it's, it's 150 feet of the actual structure that's a Class 2 historic resource. It's not a lot boundary. It's 100, so I have to be building something greater than 500 square feet. That is, if, if you measure where I'm building it to 150 feet away, if you could touch a Class 2 historic resource in that circumstance, I'd have to prepare the HR, HRIS. So it's not the lot boundary. It's the actual resource.
And it's, it's 150 for Class 1 and 300 for Class 2.
Okay, that, that's not, that's.
Oh, no, no, I'm sorry. It's that COVID brain. Yeah, somewhere in there, I just turned everything.
Yeah, you want it, if it's Class 1, you want it larger, so it's 300 feet, yeah. So those are the three circumstances where the HR, HRIS would be required. And that report would be prepared. It would be reviewed by the Historical Commission, and basically, they would then give guidance as to whether what's being constructed has an impact upon the Class 1 or Class 2 historic resource that it's near. Is really what the purpose is, is to evaluate how that new construction is going to impact, if at all, you know, the historic resource. That's, that's the intent of that section.
Yes.
And we took out, it has to be, it has to be an actual structure. It can't be a deck, a driveway, like that. It has to be a physical, like, building structure greater than 500 square feet in area.
Yes.
So just looking for comments by other members, if that's, you're comfortable with that, or?
I'm comfortable. Mark, do you have other, I, I know you. Mark, do you have other? I know you said you were going to get together with Paul Stevens and discuss a little bit more.
Paul, um, Paul had another death in his family this week.
Sorry.
I I can't believe what this guy's had to go through in the last month with the losing family members. We will be meeting over the weekend on Zoom and we'll have and you know, the final answers that Kristen needs, Kristen Camp needs. But I don't have any update on that. I know that a team from the historical commission did a drive around. Of course, right when I got COVID, just to go over the resource list and determine if we were spot, if we, what we were saying made sense. I haven't gotten the report on that yet, but I will have all of that to Kristen Camp by the end of the weekend, if that's works.
Yeah, love to hear the comments. And what I can do is, I know it's been hard to follow as a red line version. What I can do is clean it up tomorrow and send you. Sometimes it's easier when you've been working on a document for a while to start fresh as a clean document and read it through and say, is this what we wanted to say?
Oh, that sounds great.
Okay.
And again, thank you for all your commitment on this. You've just been doing a great job. Thank you.
If anybody else has any comments or thoughts about that, please let us know. The the last question is this, what process does the board want when we have the we have the demolition process, I think, pretty nailed down pretty well? So if someone wants to demolish a class one or class two, we have a very detailed section on what process they have to go through. It's ultimately going to be the Board of Commissioners' vote as to whether or not that demolition permit can be issued. What we don't have nailed down is what process, if any, and it may be that you don't really want to be involved in it. Maybe you just want your historical commission to give insight on alterations to historic resources. So that section, I think it's the last section. And the model that was carried over, as I think I said before, was taken from East Brandywine. But in East Brandywine's case, the language doesn't work because in East Brandywine's case, the recommendations of the historical commission went to the zoning officer. And then the zoning officer used those recommendations when they were issuing the permits. And your version is that the zoning officer isn't going to be the one that has to make those sort of subjective calls. It's going to go back to the Board of Commissioners. It could be that you just want a review to be done as to whether or not what's being proposed is consistent with the standards for rehabilitation, which are in the next section of the ordinance under 608-11. Those are, you know, those are, those come from the federal government standards, Department of Interior. So if you just want it that when somebody goes to alter a class one or class two, the historical commission reviews whether or not that proposed alteration meets those standards and provides a report on whether those standards are being met, then I think that's something you know, that's easy, that's easy enough process to to finish out the ordinance with. If if you want there to be a more in-depth process, and I I sent you an example of what Birmingham is considering doing for their alteration section, then that would be something I need to hear from you guys.
I I'd like to look at the Birmingham document again, but I think streamlining this is and and not making it the biggest hurdle for people who are trying to improve the historic property and maintain its integrity. We want it to to be something that people will want to do. So making it really, really difficult is not a good idea. So.
Yeah, and I think the Birmingham felt the same way. And I looked at it one more time before tonight, and it's not a overly burdensome process. And it's it's pretty high level review in terms of, again, just making sure you're not doing something crazy that's going to really alter and diminish the historical significance of the of the resource. So I think that would, you know, I would either recommend the first option, just having the the review be whether the standards for rehabilitation are being met, or if you want to go a little bit further, maybe using the Birmingham example as a as a guide.
And Kristen, just a question. Is this this is interior and exterior or just exterior?
Just exterior. Yeah, it's interesting, Josh. I don't know if I talked to you about that. We, when we first put together the Birmingham, we put in interior and we actually sent the ordinance to the county planning commission and we came, they came back with a review letter that said they've never seen a municipal ordinance regulating historic resources getting involved in the interior of a structure. So that was actually educational for me because I I assume that sometimes the interior of these buildings are things that people want to be, you know, concerned about, but they said they don't, they think that's going too far, and they would not recommend that you regulate the interior of historic resources.
I just wanted to make sure that because, you know, these old houses, same with mine, you know, knob and tube wiring, like you want, you want people to to upgrade those, you know, so I you don't want to make it harder for them.
Yeah, it's very clear that it's only the exterior that we're talking about. So one other thing, the additional use opportunities, I did touch upon this at the last meeting. I don't know if anybody had any thoughts on the additional use opportunities that I added to section 608-8. So if you have a historic resource, regardless of what zoning district you're in, by conditional use, you'd be allowed to have home occupation, professional or business office, cultural studio, daycare center, bed and breakfast, retail business establishment, restaurant, municipal use, personal service establishment, or multifamily dwelling. So if any of those seem.
Kristen, I I like all of those options. I'm just wondering, is conditional use too burdensome and expensive? Is there a way to have a hearing but not and make a motion and improve it without having a condition?
Yeah, you you could have it be just an application to the board. That's actually a good idea, Josh. Short of a conditional use, you could just dislike the demolition permit has to come to the board. You could have it just be a use that the board gets to weigh in on.
Because I just, you know, you you have a thousand dollar application or seven hundred dollar application, then you have the court reporter and the advertisement, you know, all that.
That's a good idea.
Yeah. Make it painless.
Okay. Well, if anybody has any other thoughts of other uses, I think that's a pretty broad broad group of uses that I think I have seen in other ordinances be added, and I've actually seen them be incorporated. Like I think about Upper Euclid, you have that CVS that was built, a historic resource right across from the Eagle Tavern. You have all up and down that Pottstown Pike area. You have some adaptive reuses. You have some within the borough of Westchester. I know that some banks, things like that are are in some historic buildings. So anyway, I think we're making progress. Let's, why don't we from all add what we talked about tonight, get a clean version over to Mark. He can discuss it with the gentleman over the weekend. And then I think what we'll do is just, well, you guys tell me what you want to do. But what I was thinking we would do is we would put this, insert this into the master zoning ordinance that's being amended.
I love it.
That was our goal.
Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Okay.
Henry is there. Yes, Cheryl.
Yeah, I I just had a question. It might be helpful. I mean, clearly, you're not going to put a red lined version of anything up for people to read, but it might be helpful. For instance, the stormwater ordinance was hooked to the agenda so people could read it. It would be helpful if the cleaned up version of the historic resource ordinance were hooked to the agenda so that residents can read it before it's actually adopted. And then the question becomes, do you adopt it tonight or do you adopt it once people have had an opportunity to comment?
We'd be adding it to the zoning task force. So the board wanted to discuss this and then get it to a point where we're ready to insert it into the zoning ordinance. So it would go from here to the zoning task force and then through that adoption program with the whole zoning ordinance.
Okay, when before it is adopted, it would be helpful to link it to the agenda so that people can read it. Because people are, you know, I might have comments. I have no idea. Or anyone might have comments, but wouldn't have the opportunity to come to make a realistic statement, obviously.
And we were also hoping to host to host a coffee with the commissioners
Okay.
pretty quickly. I mean, like in September or so, where it would, the focus would be the historical preservation of the township and this document. So that, you know, just an informal, this is what, this is what we've got. Take a look at it, kick it around, ask questions.
No, that's fine. Clearly, I'm very supportive of the historic. I just would like people to be able to see the document. That's all.
Absolutely.
Wondered where it was going. That's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Cheryl. There's no other questions? Need of Ms. Camp?
I think we will need her for the next item on the agenda with the stormwater.
Okay. All right, let's move on to the township engineer. We have a discussion of the draft stormwater ordinance. Al?
Yes, I believe there's somebody on Zoom to make the presentation.
You know who it is?
It's not, I don't think Andrew's on there, but it could be Mark Harmon or Colin Fox.
I don't see either of them.
None? Oh, boy.
You're on your own?
There's a, there's a phone number with no name attached, but.
I can also lead the conversation, you guys. I'm happy to. I mean, I've been very involved. This is something I'm happy to just jump in and explain. I don't know how much you guys have been brought up to speed on this. In 2013, the county took it upon themselves and they did a really nice job. The Water Resources Authority prepared a model ordinance for all municipalities in Chester County to adopt. And the reason why that had to be done was there's a state act, it's actually Act 167, which is the Pennsylvania statute that establishes stormwater management regulations and requires municipalities to adopt and enforce ordinances consistent with the state law. So recognizing what a heavy lift that was, the county did it on behalf of all municipalities and then pushed out the model ordinance and said, you have a certain amount of time, townships to adopt this to stay compliant with the state law. So in 20, I think it was in December of 2013, you, as well as every other municipality in Chester County, adopted the countywide stormwater management ordinance. That has been what you have been enforcing on all development. Anything over 1,000 square feet of impervious cover requires to do stormwater management facilities to to handle the impervious cover. In 2022, the county adopted a revised Act 167 Stormwater Management Ordinance. And this was again, to stay compliant with the state law, the changes that the D E P made to the state regulations on stormwater management. It's very, very helpful that the county did this. The commissioners adopted the model in February. They then had to send that model to the D E P. The D E P wanted the county to make three minor edits, which have been made, and the county commissioners are re adopting the ordinance in August with those three edits. So when you go to the county website and you see the model ordinance, the county did a very nice job of identifying what changes you have to make. There's changes that are mandatory that you have no choice about, and those are highlighted in green on the county version. There are changes in yellow where you have choices and decisions to make. And then there's choices, there's things in red that are the things that must be deleted from your existing ordinance. So what Arrow did, and I assisted, they took the leading role in it, is they went through your 2013 ordinance and they put into it exactly what you're required and mandated to adopt. They took out the language that you're required and mandated to delete. And then they had conversations with staff about some of the more discretionary decisions. One example of a discretionary decision is the definition of impervious cover. So it's a standard definition, but municipalities have the option to choose whether or not a swimming pool and a deck are considered impervious cover. So that's the type of conversation that they had with with Ray, Lael from their, from Arrow. Myself and Kristen participated and sort of gave guidance and suggestions on what we thought, you know, the board would want in terms of adding to the definition of impervious cover. The biggest conversation, and I think where we should focus the attention on, is there's a new section 706, and that is mandating how the stormwater management facilities are inspected and maintained. So your current stormwater ordinance does not have any inspection section. There's no section 706 in your current ordinance. There is stormwater management, operation, and maintenance agreements that get recorded. And I know you've seen those. You've been asked to approve those and they get recorded anytime somebody builds a new stormwater facility. It gets recorded in their chain of title, and it obligates the landowner to maintain the stormwater facility. But what this new county model ordinance is, it gives you two options. And it's in the new section 706, it's either you impose upon the landowner to do the inspections or the municipality takes on the obligation of doing the inspections. And that's really the conversation that we wanted to have with the board in terms of what would be your preference. The, I've been doing this for the past couple of months with, you know, 10 or 12 different municipalities and people have, you know, there's pros and cons to both. One of the pros of having the municipality, and when I say municipality, I typically, you'll contract out with a firm, an engineering firm to do the inspection. People like that option because then you have a consistent person or firm that's doing the inspections. It's not the landowner going and hiring whoever they want. Some inspectors will be very stringent. Some inspectors won't be stringent at all. So one of the positives of having the municipality do it is that you'll have a consistent checklist of what must be inspected, and it'll be inspected by the same firm. The cost of doing those inspections obviously can be passed off to the landowner. And so if you were to ask my opinion, I would say have hire a third party, you know, maybe it's Arrow, maybe it's whatever firm, you know, is is qualified to inspect it. Maybe it doesn't even have to be a professional engineer. It could be a building type inspector person and have create the checklist of what it is they have to inspect. And then have the have the municipality handle those inspections and have your fee resolution identify that the cost of doing those inspections is paid for by the landowner. No different than in your construction of when there's new development going on. For example, the dwell at Town is being built right now. As they're doing their road systems and their sewer systems, you're having your era of engineering go out and do those inspections, and the costs of those inspections are being passed on to the developer or the landowner. So it would be similar to that. There's obviously an administrative burden involved. And it would be keeping track of, you know, who who is building these stormwater facilities and then when the inspections need to be done. What the model ordinance says is that if municipality is doing the inspection, there has to be an inspection once a year for the first five years after the B M P is built, and then every three years thereafter. And then at the cessation of a 10 year, 10 year storm, I think, is the other one that has to be done. The option to have the landowners do it, some municipalities think that's a better way. It keeps you out of it. You would still be required to get a copy of those inspection reports and have somebody at your staff or your engineering firm review the inspection reports to make sure that they pass and that they are being properly maintained. So it's, I would say, the most significant change that's being made to this former ordinance with the adoption of the county model is that particular provision 706. I believe when they sent you the ordinance, they included both option one and option two for discussion. I think they did. Nope, maybe not. Hold on, let's see. Yeah, they did.
No, it's in there.
They put both of them in there. So and we don't need to make a decision tonight. The ordinance, I should have mentioned that at the beginning, the because you are an MS4 community, they're asking that you adopt the ordinance by September 30th. But I have seen the guidance that as long as you're diligently working towards that adoption date and it's it's on the horizon that you'll be adopting it, I think they're going to give you some wiggle room. So we're not asking you to make a decision tonight. I just wanted to, you know, I think we wanted to start the dialogue.
Commissioners, any questions?
I just, I mean, it seems excessive to me because a 10 year storm is, seems like it's every week now, you know? But that that that's not negotiable, right, Kristen?
You know, that's, I don't think it is. I think if you're an MS4 community, I think that paragraph three under section 706 is required. I think that is required. I mean, that that definitely it it's not that, you know, it's not going to be that easy to determine, you know, who's making that determination. I know there's National Weather Service that tells you what your storm is, but, you know, I I don't disagree that that's not going to be an easy task for the municipality to monitor and see that it gets done. So.
Would you ask whether that's negotiable or not?
I, the county water resources authority, we can, we can double check that. I'm pretty certain that it's not, but we will definitely. The county Water Resources Authority, we can, we can double check that. I'm pretty certain that it's not, but we will definitely. So I don't know, Kristen, did you, did you have any opinion on which way you would prefer to see it go?
As far as the inspections?
Yeah.
I think we should, should handle it outside. You know, we, we just don't internally have the staff to keep up on that.
No, but I think she's saying, should we be, should we contract with someone to do the third-party inspections or do we leave it to the homeowner to get their own?
No, I think we should use a third-party inspector.
Okay.
But, but, you know, when she asked, you know, what you do, I mean, I don't know how much the honor system is honorable. I, I just think it's easier to use a third-party.
Yeah, I just think it's easier for the homeowner because if I'm the homeowner, because this, if you build more than 1,000 square feet, does this apply to you? Like if you have a rain garden and everything like that?
Yeah, anything over, so anything 1,000 square feet to 2,000 square feet, you're still able to do the simplified approach? Anything over 2,000 square feet, you have to have a fully engineered stormwater management plan?
Anything that somebody has built over 2,000 square feet that has a stormwater facility would have to be inspected every year for the first five years and then three years after or every 10-year storm?
During or immediately after the cessation of the 10-year storm? Yeah.
I just think me as a homeowner, like who am I, I don't know.
Well, I think that's why having a third party do this, because what we're going to have is homeowners call us and say, who should we use to do this?
Right.
And you're going to have a plethora of, of different construction managers, engineers, anybody who claims they're an expert. It, it's easier if there's just one group that is a standard for everyone.
I'm just concerned about that 10-year because that, that seems excessive to me.
And who pays for these inspections?
Well, that's.
That's supposed to be given to the homeowner.
Yeah, I mean, the, the one, the one, if you read the county, and I don't expect you to read the entire county model, but do, if you wouldn't mind, we'll make sure you have that, that section because they, the options that they provide. Some municipalities, one of the things they're suggesting municipalities do is collect a fee upfront. So the example is I'm building in addition to my house that's 2,500 square feet, say, for example. So I'm going through, I'm hiring engineer, I'm doing a stormwater management plan that's getting reviewed and approved. I build my structure, I build my stormwater management facility. I record my stormwater management agreement against my property. For every five years after, you're going to send me a notice or you're, you're going to remind me that, or you're going to send out your inspector, for example. Maybe it's on a, you know, every July or something, you send these inspectors out. One of the ways that the county is suggesting that you pay for those costs is collect the fee upfront. The problem that I saw with that is how, how do you know what fee to collect? And what are you going to do with it? Where are you going to put this money? You know, to me it seems, and it's already an expensive proposition to have to do the stormwater management facilities to begin with. I've already had to hire engineer. I've had, you know what I mean? So to add another expense upfront may become to the point where somebody's going to just say, I'm not even going to do this improvement to my property. Where if, if I, I'm still have to pay for the inspection, but if you can spread it out a year after I built my, you know, my addition, and then another year after that, at least you're spreading the cost out. And the cost should not be that significant. I mean, the hourly rate for your inspectors, I mean, obviously that cost is going to escalate through over time. But it, it shouldn't be, especially if you develop a checklist as to what it is they're inspecting. Then it, it should hopefully be a very streamlined process, especially on something that's an easy. Now I'm definitely getting out of my league here, talking engineering, but if it's something that like you're looking at an infiltration bed, you're just making sure that the water going to it is, is going underneath, that it's not clogged with debris, that kind of thing. It shouldn't be a very lengthy inspection process.
I'm really concerned because you could, you could have 30 inspections in a year if you got 10, 30, 30, 10-year storms in a, in a single year.
Yeah, again, I, Josh, I'm looking back at the model.
What's a 10-year storm? Is it a certain amount of rain?
It says the engineer determines.
Volume of rain, it's the volume of rain, Paul, but obviously those numbers will change as Josh is pointing that anymore the frequency of high-volume storms has been going up.
All right, Al, you have something?
That's usually about an inch of rain.
Just an inch of rain?
Generally, yeah, in that neighborhood.
Wow.
During, during one rainy fall though.
You know, I might have, I might have been reading this wrong. It might be, the way I'm reading it says, I'm on page 96 of the model, it says, note to editor, municipalities with an MS4 permit must include the following inspection requirement for all BMPs inspected by the municipality during or immediately after the cessation of a 25-year or greater storm. So I think that it can be 25-year storm for that mandatory requirement. But we will get clarification on that and make sure that part is correct.
And also I ask if that's negotiable because even 25-year, what's, Al, what's 25?
I'm pretty certain that is not negotiable. So, so this is where the confusion lies. If you choose option one and the municipality is doing the inspection, it's the 25-year storm. If you choose option two and the landowner is doing the inspection, it's the 10-year storm.
That's the difference. And 25-year storm, Al, how many inches of rain?
It's, it's.
Two to three?
No.
Four? Not that much?
It's less than two. Might be one and three quarters.
It still seems excessive to me.
And this is all for any new development or new permits that would come across our way?
Kristen, does this retroactively go back to people that had the 1,000-square-foot?
That's a good question.
The way it's written now, it's, it's accumulative from when your 2013 ordinance was adopted.
It would affect people that.
So they, they would add anything that's been done since 2013? So once they meet the, what, 2,000 square feet?
Correct.
So if they already built 2,500 square feet, then this, this would apply to them?
Yes. Well, if they already built 2,500 square feet, they would have had to do stormwater management.
Right, that's what I'm saying though, but they have a separate stormwater management agreement currently, correct?
Yeah, what I'm not clear on, Josh, to be quite honest with you, is, is how, because I, I, I think some municipalities are saying this inspection requirement wasn't in your 2013 ordinance. And so we're going to start, when the ordinance is adopted, BMPs that are constructed after that is what we're going to start keeping track of. You know, there, there's some, some people may say that's not fair. You know, why, just because I built mine in 2023, are you going to now have this inspection requirement? For somebody that built something in 2021 doesn't have that same stringent inspection requirement. Granted, in 2021, the, the stormwater agreement that you're signing does say the landowner must inspect. So again, that's sort of a policy thought. With, with that is, you know, do we, can we go back in time from 20, basically from January 20, January 1st, 2014 to when you adopt this 2022 ordinance? Do you have a list of all the BMPs that have been built? I mean, that's not a small task to go back and create that, that list. And then put them on your list of everything that must be inspected. I mean, that's going to be administrative staff time to do. So.
I just don't know, that, that wasn't the understanding somebody had when they built the, you know, whatever addition or whatever they built. You know? Yeah, I, I just think that would be unfair to go back and say to them now, you now have to do all X, Y, and Z.
Okay, so yeah, anything total impervious over 1,000 since 2014 is going to require this. So.
And this would be added to our permits? So if folks came in and filed for a permit, what they would be entailed to do?
Yeah, it's already part of your system. I mean, you're already, when somebody comes in for a building permit, based on what it is they're constructing, they're got, given guidance as to whether they need to do stormwater management.
And the additional cost, you know, annually and every three years and up to 10 years. I think it just keeps going.
And Kristen, can you just clarify again, this is, this is really not an option for, we have some wiggle room there, but we don't have the ability to say no to this.
That's correct. You and every other municipality in Chester County. And, 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 you know, people are asking, what happens if we don't? If you don't adopt it, then you're technically going to be in violation of your MS4 permit. So where this will come to light is when you go to renew your MS4 permit. The DEP, one of the things that they're going to be checking is whether or not you've adopted the countywide model ordinance.
And what would that mean for residents if we don't, if we're in violation of our MS4 permit?
DEP could, could sign, could, excuse me, could fine the township.
As well as not issue new permits, correct?
The, new MS4 permits?
Yes.
Yeah, they would probably hold that up. That would be, that would, yes.
So somebody trying to redevelop a property on Lincoln Highway would not be eligible to, to get their MS4 permit?
No, no, no. The MS4 permit is only issued to county township.
Right, but.
So it wouldn't impact, it wouldn't impact individual property owners in the township, but it, it would impact the township as a whole where the DEP would cite the township. And you'd be facing a notice of, the township would be cited under DEP regulations for not being in compliance with the MS4 regulations.
So we wouldn't be able to renew our MS4 if we didn't comply, but in the period while leading up to re-upping the MS4, an individual could get an MS4 permit?
Individual, MS4 is only issued to municipalities. So MS4 stands for municipal storm sewer system. The individual property owners, if they disturb greater than one acre, get the NPDES permit. So the MS4 is like the NPDES, but it's specific to municipalities. The municipalities, if you don't adopt this, this standard ordinance, the updated ordinance, it impacts your ability to have your MS4 permit renewed. It, it subjects you to possible citations by the DEP. It affects your ability to have grant funding and also potentially FEMA aid. So this is, it's, it's because it's, this all trickles down from the Clean Water Act, which is a federal law. So the Clean Water Act is a federal law, then mandates the state to have stormwater management. The state then mandates the municipalities. And then the municipalities then mandate to the homeowners and the property owners. So it all sort of trickles down for the goal of cleaning, cleaning our streams and our waterways.
And it's important.
It is important. And it's, you know, I use count as an example of a municipality where, you know, it, you, you, I, I know it costs money and I know it's, it's another administrative burden. But, you know, you saw what happened in Storm Ida. If, if stormwater management facilities are not properly maintained or not properly built, not properly designed, you know, especially being in a floodplain area, it, it can have devastating effects. The other thing that, as much as it is, it becomes, you know, costly and administratively burdensome, if you're going to make people design and build the stormwater facilities, people need to understand they need to be properly maintained or there's no point in building them. So you, it's akin to a septic system. You have a septic system, it's built, if you're properly pumping it, you're taking care of it in terms of what you dispose into it, the septic system will continue to work, you know, in most cases. It will last you, it'll, you know, live its life, its useful life. If you don't properly maintain your septic system, if you don't follow the manufacturers and the design specifications for what's supposed to go into it, your septic system is going to fail and the environment's going to be harmed, you're going to have to rebuild it. So stormwater management is similar in those, in that regard. And I think one of the things, and I know you're doing it, and your MS4 program requires you to do education, it's really going to be educating property owners who build stormwater facilities on what, what needs to be done to make sure that they stay, you know, if you have an infiltration base and you're seeing these be, be built all the time now, right? What does it mean to, how do you maintain these? What do you need to do? After there's a big 10-year storm, 25-year storm, what is it that a property owner should go do and look and check and see? To make sure that it's being, it's still working the way it was designed. And that's something I think the township can, can develop information sessions and have information on your website, put it out into your newsletters, that kind of thing. And, and that's not something, it's not going to just be you alone. You don't have to reinvent the wheel on this. There's going to be all kinds of guidance. I think the county is going to push down after the ordinances are adopted. That was, that's the most important conversation. I think a lot of the other, the other optional things, I think, quite honestly, I rely upon Arrow as the engineering firm that does your stormwater management. Ray had a very in-depth review and gave his opinion. You know, he's the hands-on and sees how these ordinance sections impact development. So he provided his, his input to these. And then some of the legal questions, I had provided my input on. So I think it's something food for thought. I think guys, everybody, if you could take the time to look at those sections and maybe think about, you know, the guidance that you'd like to provide back. We have some time, we don't have a ton of time, but we do have some time. This is the first meeting in August and maybe Arrow can present the second meeting and, and by then you'll have had time to think about it and ask questions.
Fantastic, thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions on that? I, I would be interested in, in getting an estimate on how much these inspections would be using an outside service.
Good question.
Ballpark, yeah. Any questions from residents? I think I saw a hand raised.
Ms. Spalding? Yeah, I, I have a number of questions, but they don't need to be addressed here. Ray and I can work on that. But I would agree very much with your solicitor. And I would be kind of, I'm, I'm kind of surprised to find anyone on the board suggesting that in any way you might either not adopt this, this ordinance or you might want to back off from it considering what happened with Ida. And considering that that's not the worst that, that anyone expects in the future. You know, the powers that be expect worse, not less. So, so insofar as this, you know, ordinance has the options to apply more stringent or less stringent things in it, I, I, I would be very, I, I think the township would be remiss if not looking really hard at putting in the most stringent things there are because I agree with your solicitor. You know, all these infiltration, whatever is installed, if it's not, even in a homeowner. If I put something in and there are four homeowners and it takes out, you know, we've lost that bridge. And there was a whole lot of water came down it and it came from somewhere. It came from places that did not maintain it. We believe in the past, you know, this goes back many years ago, even when I was in that business, people believed they could keep that water on their sites and clearly that's not working. So I would encourage you to be even more stringent, to, to fall on the side of stringent, being stringent. And not on the side of giving, and I'm sorry for people if it's going to cost a little more. But if you're building a 2,500-square-foot addition, that's a cost you could put into even the financing of it. So, and I am less concerned about the residents, and this is something I would ask you, your solicitor. This does not just apply to residences, correct? This would apply to apartment buildings and shopping.
Oh, yeah, anybody, any property owner that develops.
Yeah, so while I don't want to see residents harmed, I do think that if you're building an addition that's 2,500 square feet, you could wrap that price in somehow in the construction, probably a bank would even allow that. But where it does become critical, and that's why I want, would really encourage you to fall on the stringent side, is that on large projects where you've got a part, and these are here coming in, you know, on the way or coming, parking complexes and, and, you know, like a bum dwell on the top of that hill, how much water is going to come down that hill? I don't know. A shopping center, you got a Lomax, there are any number of projects where a tremendous amount of water, the kind of water that could take out that bridge and did take out that bridge could happen again in a storm that may be worse and it may well be worse. So I'm, I'm a little less, I don't mean I'm not. I don't care about the residents, I certainly do. But I think protecting them by being more stringent falls on the side of being more responsible as, as commissioners than it does to say we, we're going to protect our residents from the pain of all of this. Because the reality is that nobody's going to be escape this pain. You know, you've got the Midwest who has no water. Well, they don't have water, we have too much. So, you know, we're all fighting the battles in different ways. So I won't belabor this, but I would really like to see us fall on the side of being as hard as we can, as responsible as we can in adopting what clearly the engineers, and I'm no engineer, think is, is the possibility to now. And in 2013, they thought they knew. This is 2022, they don't know. And in another 10 years, it may change again. So that, that's just, and then. and then my only other question is where does this go from here? Can you also link the next version up on, as you did, on the agenda and then you, you're saying it might appear again, the second meeting?
Spalding, we do, anytime an ordinance is, is going to be adopted, it has to be advertised and when it's going to be adopted, that's when we link it on, on the, the final version is linked to the agenda for the, for the community to see it.
Okay. Well, you, you, you linked this one probably because I asked, so it certainly was brief to move that. I don't, you know, that's fine.
Again, you know, it's, you know, it's a very lengthy document. We want to make sure that the community doesn't get confused so that the final document, you know, and there has to be a, a, a seven day period. We can't, you know, that's, that's the law. We have to have it advertised for so long before it can be adopted. So, you know, we're, we're trying to get the right information in people's hands.
I understand.
Thank you, Cheryl. Very good points.
And Cheryl, I just wanted to say, like Paul was saying, really, really good points and, and appreciate your input on that. I can only speak for myself, but I was not, I wasn't trying to imply that we should not be compliant with MS four. I was trying to figure out how much time we could buy while we figured out the best way to approach this, whether it's, you know, us choosing the third party or the residents paying for their own and figuring out the timeframe on it. We can't afford another Ida. We can't afford any stormwater issues getting worse here.
Mark, on that point, let me comment real quick. 706 is one of the sections that municipalities do have discretion in how they want to handle it. You do have to impose the inspection requirement, but how you go about administering that is up to you. So you could adopt it to meet this, you know, to meet the deadline and, and work through that and then amend that section in the future if you come up with a different way to, to go about it. So, and I think that, I think you'll see that, I think you'll see that happen because I think municipalities are going to give it a go and see, hey, does it work going, doing it this way? You know, does it work having us hire somebody to do this? Does it work having landowners do it? And, and it, you'll through experience determine whether it works or not. That particular section can be amended again in the future.
Thanks. That's great.
Yeah.
Miss Danny, I, I think we have a couple more hands raised.
One more in the audience.
One more? Okay. Just state your name and address. I think it's a new person we're not familiar with. Dan?
Mr. Hagan?
Yes, yeah. Hi, this is Dan Hagan, 217 Park Drive. I, I was actually one of the ones, our family was one of the ones that was lucky to have suffered through the Ida scenario. So I guess listening to some of the things of all the things for things going forward and the things that, that, that people have to do, I guess the question then comes down to also of things, and I'm sorry if previous meetings had hit on this, we're still working on a house, so I haven't made as many of the meetings. So what of things also that are already existing? Even before Ida, in this area, you know, at Park Drive and over by the, by the apartments, even before Ida with that, the, the amount of water that would go through there, that's now creating all the erosion back there at Beaver Creek and possibly the, the issues that are at the basin, that's a little bit up from my house that causes the overflow. Is that also in, in this agenda?
Good question. So I believe what I heard Kristen say earlier is if we have to make a decision on 2013 moving forward, but anything prior to 2013 wouldn't be subject to any of this.
Yeah, and I'm not sure I understood the question. If he's talking about.
You were saying like older basins and things like that, things built in the eighties, nineties, two thousands.
It would only be things, it could only apply to things built after the 2013 ordinance was adopted. So, so structures be built in 2014 forward that were built under the current ordinance.
It's not just about the things of being part of what, what that is, but, but of the repair that might need to be done to help with the flow of water through this area. You know, to, to kind of, that water is coming from somewhere. So either of those things weren't taken care of at one point. But, but also th- this area not being able to handle, because this is where it all kind of ends up.
Right.
What is, what is being done to help, I guess, with the erosion that's already happening back there?
Right, sir. Hopefully I'm understanding what you're saying. So, so what we're talking about with the stormwater ordinance is private property where there's construction occurring and they're required to implement stormwater management controls. What you might be talking about are storm sewer systems within the public rights of way, which is, we, we talked before about the MS four permit. That's the township's municipal storm sewer system. And that is something that the township is responsible to maintain and improve, and they have been. And if you've, if, if you have the opportunity, like a lot of the last meetings, there's been four, five, six different projects that are underway currently today and additional projects that will go in the future. Again, the township has to do these projects under its MS four permit, but they're recognizing there's substandard facilities out there that have to be improved. One of the gentlemen that made the first comments at the beginning of the meeting talked about Reed Street. So Arrow Engineering, the township's engineer right now is designing a new storm sewer system for that, for that neighborhood. Because those roads and those developments were built, I think in the forties or the fifties where we didn't have storm drains underneath the ground. So that is a continual effort that the township is having to, to work on and try to improve. And it's, you know, it's, it's over time. Every municipality around, I represent West Ocean, they've had, you know, six or seven significant stormwater management projects within their public road systems that they're working on this year. Because pipes have failed and, and, you know, corrugated metal pipe is what was used and it's, you know, falling in and having to be replaced. So they are, they are working on that and it is something they take very seriously.
Okay. Thank you.
And Dan, I'm not sure if I met you during that period of time, but I, I take it you're speaking about the basins.
Yes.
In your backyard area.
That was one of the areas. Yes, yes.
Okay.
And, and yes, we did. It was very kind of you to come by.
Okay. Yeah. And I, I do remember in front of your house as well, because I, I think that's where the water that did all the damage came from.
And honestly, at the time it happened, it seemed to come from everywhere.
Yeah, it did. It did.
I don't think there was a place water wasn't coming from at that moment.
But yeah, we're, we're hopefully going to, we're outlining out the entire township, trying to map out all the stormwater piping, get things cleared up. So hopefully we'll make it out to your area as well, see what we can do. I know we're limited because it is, you know, the private property. But whatever information we can get to you or whatever we can do, we will help. Okay?
Thank you very much.
All right. Thanks, Dan. Did we have another hand raised?
Yes. Mike?
Oh, let's, let's go with Mike here. Mike, please, at the podium.
Mike Bedrick, 7001. I don't know if I heard right, but this, what we were talking about, land owned by private owners, have we, does this also address commercial, industrial and all that? Or is that separate ordinance?
Oh, that's any, any private property, whether it's residential, commercial, industrial, institutional, doesn't matter.
Thank you. I wasn't sure about that. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah. Commercial developments, whatnot, they, they have the money to take care of this. I think our concern is, you know, the resident that would just put up a deck in the backyard and then they're subject to this annual fee. And that's why i- if it's a small nominal fee, at least they, they can be prepared for it. And just, just a reminder that this is cumulative from 2013. So in perpetuity, moving forward, if you, if you improve your property by a thousand square feet, you're going to be subject to these rules. So just want to be clear, this is not, hey, just somebody that just put up a huge 2,500 square foot addition. This is, you know, I put up a deck of 500 square feet and then Paul bought the house and he put a patio on of 500 square feet. Now that triggers the, the stormwater management. So just want to be clear, this is in perpetuity forever, you know, as, as you add, you, you could, you could do two small patios and, and clear this threshold. So just want to be clear that, that, that's the person that I'm concerned about, you know, every 10-year storm that, you know, that, that has to come out and be inspected. Because that, that, that homeowner might not realize when they go to build this patio or deck or whatever pool or whatever it is, that they might, you know, if we have a really rainy sea year, they, they could be triggered into 30 inspections. So I, I just want to be, make sure that the, the residents are clear on that and want to make sure that we understand what that, that trigger level is. So that, I wasn't implying that, you know, we shouldn't adopt anything or that these aren't important. I'm just saying, you know, if somebody puts in a patio, they may not realize what all they're getting into and what, what triggers this might be. Yeah, the big developments, you know, with huge basins and stuff like that, that's a homeowners association and not that it, it doesn't matter because it's still the resident paying that. But they, they're managed. So tho- those places, a lot of times somebody is on top of that already. It's the, the regular homeowner who doesn't realize that, you know, their rain garden is filling up with silt and, you know, could trigger, you know, large amounts of, of work to be done to those, those items. Or somebody that bought something that had the thousand square feet crossed already and did, you know, bought the thing and didn't realize now they, they've got this, you know, inspection requirement. So that, that's just what I'm concerned about and what that cost would be for the resident. Josh. Well, we did have a hand raised in the Zoom world and then I'll get to you, Tony. Oh, no, hands down. Okay. Mr. Disario.
Tony Disario, 251 Loomis Avenue. Kristin said there's no point building an MS four garden.
I'm sorry. Mark, you can't hear him?
Uh, Kristin.
No, I hear him. Good.
Point of building an MS four gardens not unless your streams are maintained?
I said, that's not what I said. I said that the ordinance requires stormwater management facilities to be built. And what I'm saying is if you're going to require them to be built, then you have to require them to be maintained. Because what's the point of spending the money to build them if they're not properly maintained? That, that was the point I made.
I thought, I thought you said the streams maintained.
No, the facilities that are built, the stormwater management facilities such as basins and infiltration beds, that kind of thing.
Not the streams?
No.
Okay. I do have a retention berm in my yard. I'm the only one in Callan Township. I control the 100-year flood plan.
Thank you. Keeps it away from my house. Yes, John?
John, John Hashem. Just to add a little two cents. I think most municipalities have the option of giving a one-time exception to a home builder when they're adding a certain number of square feet. I'm not sure what the threshold is or if you have an adoption to that in the Callan Township already. But in your regards, your concern regarding the homeowner that wants to put up a 500 square foot deck or something, I think the township has discretion on a one-time exemption up to a certain number of square feet.
Anything over a thousand square feet. Yeah, anything over a thousand.
Anything over a thousand would trigger, Kristen, like a smaller stormwater up to 2,000, correct?
Yes. 1,000, 2,000, you can do what's called the simplified approach. Over 2,000, you need the fully engineered plan.
No, under a thousand, but that's in perpetuity. So if, if you put up a 250 square foot patio today, but make it 500 in five years, then that continues to add to your, to your thousand square.
Right, but you do have a, you do have a little discretion on those requirement needs for that smaller homeowner.
Yes, up to 1,000 square feet. We do have the discretion. Thank you, John.
We do have another hand up.
Okay.
Ms. Spalding?
Ms. Cheryl?
Ms. Spalding?
Sorry.
There you go.
Um, I just want to be sure I understood what Ms. Camp said. In other words, all of this, all of this ordinance and everything prior to it really relates to only anything built after the year 2013. And nothing is, is held to account that was built prior to 2013? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Wow. So what controls, what exists either in Callan's hands or the county's hands or somebody's hands to control anything that was built before 2013?
So it was, I, I'm not familiar right now. It's out of my head. Ms. Spalding, I'm happy to look into it. I think, I think Count had a stormwater management ordinance, but it was within stormwater management regulations within your subdivision ordinance prior to 2013. So prior to 2013, you still had to do stormwater management. It wasn't that they didn't have to do anything, but it was contained within subdivision or land development. So if you were doing a subdivision or land development project, you had to implement stormwater management facilities. And your subdivision plan would have notes that are specific to what had to be built and, and how it had to be maintained. So you'd have to go back to each individual plan that was approved. So it's not to say that there isn't enforcement. It's just a different form of enforcement than what's in your current stormwater ordinance.
So let me pose a, a scenario to you, if I may. Now, in my case, I, I, I'm not in a development and I don't have that, but let us say that the, the township determines that XYZ basin, which is on a private property, contributed to the flood. And that was built prior to 2013. They would have the ability to go in and look at that plan and say, hey, you have to go back and do the following, correct?
Yeah. And Cheryl, we've actually been dealing with that. Some of the older developments where we've experienced some problems, we, we have to do our homework and we have to go back and look what year that plan was approved, what ordinances that were in effect, what notes are on the plan, what recorded documents may have accompanied the plan approval. For example, HOA declarations often were when HOAs owned the land where the basins are located, those documents are recorded in the chain of title and we often go back and review those documents to see if they imposed upon the homeowners association certain obligations of maintenance. So it's, it, it's sort of a case by case. The further you go back in time, the less we're able to find development became more sophisticated as we've gotten, you know, to the more recent times.
It just seems like a prescription for a nightmare, that's all. Yep, I get it.
And Cheryl, everything since I've been here, we've been doing stormwater management agreements and HOA documents. So, yeah, and the HOAs now have to basically be managed by a private company to help them, you know, maintain their facilities. So the newer developments have people looking out for this stuff all the time. You go back to things that were built in the seventies, eighties, tho- those have very little. If, e- even if you look at the links next to the golf course, that, that has no HOA, built just before 2,000. So, you know, everything pri- after that has an HOA which, you know, helps manage those facilities. But prior to that, it was the property owner that happened to have the basin for the whole development that got stuck with, with the, with the basin.
Wow. I'm just, my only comment is, it's, it's, you know, we've come, we've come such a long way in the weather change in such a short period of time. I think it's a major contributor to this, but okay. Thank you.
I'm disagreeing. Uh, Paul had to step out for a minute, so I guess I'll ask if there's any other comments or questions.
Not on Zoom.
Okay. Anything else from the township engineer? Okay.
Kristen, do you need me to stick around for the next conversation or am I excused?
No, I think you're, you're good to go.
Okay. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Kristen. Have a great, great weekend.
You too.
So in front of you, Mr. Gill had put a memo explaining that we are pricing, we have the option within our recycling grant to price out for, not for collection, but just for where we actually take our recyclables. We have to give a 90-day notice to our current hauler if we don't wish to continue with them in 2023. Currently it is going to be $65 a ton if we wanted AJ to continue to take it to Eagle. The county is able to do that.
I saw it for 45?
I, I think, yeah, that's.
Because we have single stream, correct?
Yeah, so if you, one second here. We were at a meeting this morning and it is looking like the county will be able to do a significant savings.
It says here, single stream bid was 44.95 per ton?
Yes, and it looks like he will be taking it to $65 per ton.
Now, this, the, well, I'm, I'm talking about the county bid. This was from Amy Overly?
Yes.
And it says, single stream would cost the municipality 44.95 per ton?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Versus sixty-five.
Six versus sixty-five, okay.
So we need to, it it, I assume we obviously want to execute that. Uh, but we need a motion for authorization for me to sign the official written notice of termination letter to Eagle disposal.
Just to clarify, it's not changing the trash service. It is just where our recyclables end up.
Correct.
Commissioners, any questions on that? Residents?
Not at Zoom.
I'm gonna save you a buck here. Entertain a motion to authorize.
We we just had somebody raise their hand. Mr. DeYoung?
Yes. Mark.
Mark DeYoung, twenty beaver run road. Just want to say, that's fantastic. Thank you for a good job.
All right, thanks, Mark. All right, we uh entertain a motion uh to authorize Kristin Denny to sign the official written notice of termination letter in the form as presented and forward to Eagle disposal.
Someone's so moved.
Second.
Everyone's jumping on that. Motion by Commissioner Young, second by I'm gonna go with Tindaro, Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, five zero. Great, and are we? You're you're, we'll be dealing with the county at that point, right?
Well, this is just, the only thing we're doing tonight for official action is we have to give that ninety day notice. We want to get that notice in in the next coming month. It will probably be for the first meeting in September. We'll have the official documentation from the county that Kristin Campbell needs to review and have ready for you.
Okay.
So no, no other motion needs made this evening other than to cancel the twenty twenty-three.
Okay, and they're gonna finish it out uh till December thirty-first. Okay.
Are, excuse me, are we staying with um the the current?
Yes, but so the only thing, this, the residents will see no change whatsoever. The only, the the same people collected, we get a choice each year of who, of what dump we take it to.
Okay.
So the resident, it'll be absolutely the same. The only people that really know is probably me and Scott.
People that collect it. Okay, thank you very much.
Um, next, we had a resignation of Mike Noble from the zoning task force and from the zoning hearing board. Just wanted to bring it, you know, for you to make an emotion to accept. Also to announce, we we are in dire need of members for the zoning hearing board. Um, they do not meet but maybe three or four times a year, but they are a very, very important part of municipal government. Um, it cannot be somebody who already sits on another board and commission because this is a quasi judicial board and therefore needs to be an independent body. So I wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. If there's anybody in the Zoom world who who would like to join this commission, please let us know. Again, we we would, you know, really appreciate anybody who is willing to give their.
Is there any training involved for this position?
There is a solicitor. I I mean, it's it's kind of a learn-as-you-go situation. You'll be learning from your peers on the zoning hearing board. Uh, there is a solicitor who guides, you know, the zoning hearing board through all decisions. So it, you know, there's no formal training you need to go through to be present.
You don't need to be an engineer or any any kind of degree like that. Just a love for your township.
Um, and the ability to read very lengthy packets.
And I I believe it it's one of the few paid positions we offer. Okay. Not much, but it is seventy-five, fifty dollars.
Nominal.
Nominal, let's go with nominal.
Twenty-five.
But uh, any volunteers, please, uh, reach out to us.
Mr. Mull, do I get another stupid question or have I used them all tonight?
Uh, no, feel free.
Last one, Mark.
Did we vote on the uh last, on the recyclables? I know we had a motion and a a second, but I don't remember voting.
Yeah, we did.
Whoa.
And and you said yes.
Okay. Did anyone else just hear that that big static thing?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Loud effects of COVID. All right, so we do need a motion to uh accept the resignation of Mr. Noble from the zoning task force.
So moved.
Zoning hearing board.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's good, five zero. I do want to say, uh, thank you very much, uh, Mike, uh, for joining us for the last, uh, well, year and a half through this uh zoning task force as well and and all your work on the zoning hearing hearing board. Anyway, thank you very much. Uh, next.
Uh, next assignment, we have the retirement of Officer Thomas Savage from the Callan County Police Department. This does have to go before the Board of Commissioners because um it is a civil servant position. Um, so therefore, Board of Commissioners technically hires them, so therefore they must also accept their resignation.
He can't go. We like him.
Not a lamb.
How many years of service did I read?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. That is commendable.
Joseph.
Questions on this? If not, uh, entertain a motion.
So moved.
Move.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 It's good, five zero. We have accepted the resignation of officer Officer Thomas Savage.
Thomas Savage.
And I butchered that one. Okay. I do apologize. Next on the agenda, uh, some leftover ordinance and resolutions for consideration. Oh, the uh, the shared video license. Uh, Ms. Denny, do you want to just elaborate a little bit on that?
Yes, we already have this in place. PennDOT had updated some of their terms and and just wanted to make sure that we had an updated agreement in place. Um, so this is at no cost to us. It's a program we already participate in. PennDOT has given us the the equipment and the housing here. It's just that we are agreeing anytime they want to access the data on that equipment. They have the authorization to do so.
And we are limited on how we use that information as well.
Department uses.
With the sole uh approval of PennDOT?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's 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 not something the public can come in and use.
Exactly.
No, no, it is it is unofficial and and, you know, farted and technically the data is really owned by them. So no, it's not something that anybody can come who's, you know, off the street and say, I want to look at my traffic light and who went through this tra- no.
Exactly, okay. Uh, Commissioners, any questions on this resolution?
No.
Residents, any questions on this?
Not in Zoom world.
Great, uh, I'll entertain a motion uh to approve Resolution twenty twenty-two dash twenty-seven authorizing uh the township manager, secretary, uh, to sign the documents necessary to engage in a shared video licensing agreement with PennDOT.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, five zero. I know we had a lengthy meeting last night uh with three of the local EMS services. Uh, very good information. I don't know if everybody had a chance to uh chime in last night. But uh, at this point, I will table it one more meeting for the uh last resolution here. And hopefully for next meeting, we can have an answer. Commissioners, you, we okay? We, oh, I'm getting tired. We okay for that?
Yes.
All right, perfect. All right, uh, next minutes to approve, uh, Board of Commissioner, meeting minutes of July twenty-eighth. Any additions, corrections needed? If not, entertain a motion.
I actually realized that I hadn't sent Denise the document that she needed for that. So I would like to table this until the next meeting.
Your information wasn't in there? I could have sworn I read that.
It was um extreme. It wasn't what's usually in there. It was just like a couple of sentences. It's um.
I know you were short last time, but yeah.
I wasn't that short.
Okay, well, if you if you don't believe everything was uh uh written up.
It's not her fault, so.
Okay. I know what you're there.
She's the best.
So till next meeting?
Yeah.
And we do have a uh, the minutes from the special meeting held on July twenty-eighth. Commissioners, any questions, additions, changes? If not, entertain a motion for the approval.
So moved.
Second.
I can't say hello, everybody.
Moved by Commissioner uh Young, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
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 Motion's good, five zero. You know, Mark, I actually have a change on that uh previous minutes. So I'll I'll add that to my email.
Okay, but that was taped.
Yeah, that was tabled.
Who, I'm sorry, who was the motion in a second?
Wasn't on on the
Oh, oh.
On the minutes or the table?
The table. We need to make a motion to table it?
Yes.
Yeah, nobody did.
So moved.
Entertain a motion.
Moved.
Moved.
Second.
I move by Commissioner Evans, second by Commissioner Kennedy. All in favor? To table the uh
Aye. Aye.
July twenty-eight minutes.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's good, five zero. Open table. All right, board and uh commission updates. Uh, we'll start out with park and rec.
Nope, you missed finance.
I'm sorry to go back. So did we have the 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 special meetings were approved?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, it's been a while. Uh, yes, go back to finance department. We have a check run forty-eight thousand six hundred twenty-one to forty-eight thousand six hundred seventy-eight with a manual check run of two seventy-three and two seventy-four. Commissioners, any questions on the check run?
No questions.
I did, I did have one. It's good to see Brenda's vac shop is still uh going. How's it, Brenda? So um, uh, the twenty-eight thousand or twenty-eight hundred spent on the twenty seventeen Ford Edge. That that's the first check there. I was trying to, it's a two thousand and seventeen. Are we?
That was for upfitting for um for the fire inspector.
Oh, okay, okay. It's not it's not repairs because that, you know.
We've transferred it over to code and and so we had to do upfitting of some emergency lighting.
Okay. When you start spending that much money on a vehicle, you kind of wonder.
Josh doesn't like to hear that. You know, he will tell you forever and a day, twenty-eight hundred dollars is nothing.
I just had one with seven thousand dollars today.
Have you noticed any uh savings on gas lately with the prices going down?
It's a little. Yeah, a little bit, on Route Thirty.
Fine, I just see three thousand dollars for the MAC energy.
We don't get, we don't get invoiced until the end of the month.
Oh. Yeah.
So last bill you're paying this month is not gonna.
Is from the previous, okay. So we might see a little bit of savings, okay. So I'm good with the checks. Uh, Commissioners, if uh no one else has any other changes, I'll uh entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Young, second by Commissioner Tindaro. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
It's good, five zero. Checks have been approved. Now we can go to the park, uh, the boards and commissions. Start out with park and rec.
Yes, with park, with park and recs. Um, I'd ever like to thank all the residents who took time from their busy schedules and came down and celebrated uh a nice summer night uh under the, under the stars. Um, it started out kind of iffy, but hey, look, the sun held out until the end. We had Chico vibe out and they were sending great vibes out into the park and I was overwhelmed to see so many people out, you know, it was just a beautiful turnout, you know, and it was good to be back together as a community and we wanted to again acknowledge uh our sponsors. Excuse me, um, Big Boys Barbecue and yeah, the pool park was very good and it seemed like everybody enjoyed that. And also to Chester County Dental Arts um for their sponsorship and they have so many great giveaways for little kids, uh, lighted up yoyos and sunglasses and water bottles and you just name it. And we had our police department on staff as well, you know, giving out, you know, literature and stickers to the little ones and to park and recs for the table that was mandated there for the kids to blow bubbles. And I mean, they had a ball. So it it was good to be out and it was good to see so many of our our residents out together and join one another. And with that said, we're now preparing and getting ready for our community day. On September tenth, I believe that is. And if you haven't signed up or if you're interested in becoming a vendor or if you know any businesses in the township, uh, let's get out there and encourage all of us to come together and support one another for the big day that we celebrate our businesses, our families and our township employees and you know, let's just have a great time. It's been a couple of years and I know Abby's working around the clock, trying to make sure that it's very successful. And so we look forward to you being out again. And if you think we had a great time in the park last week, I I think it's gonna be as twice as big coming up um in September. So let's look for everybody to come out. And and for the fireworks, again, that that was good. I know the families enjoyed that and we pretty much got out every before the rain came and and washed everybody away, but it was just a great night. I I really enjoyed it. I got to get my pop out, so that was really exciting to bring him along. And in regards to COG, which is next, COG didn't have a regular meeting last month. Uh, they went up to the point in Parksburg and they just had an open forum that night and to discuss the impact of the uh, excuse me, of the um, the loss of the EMS system and how it's impacting, you know, our community. So I mean, that seems to be on everybody's agendas, you know, because everybody's in the same boat. Like, how does this affect our residents? How can we provide the best EMS services for our communities? So everybody is on board and, you know, the COG community was out and everybody's trying to work together with this is look like. And like I was saying to Paul earlier, you never really realize the impact or the importance of our E- EMS services. And even some of our fire services, you just don't really get it until it really hits you right at home like it is today. So it is something that is, I'm sure everybody's discussing, discussing around their dinner tables because again, if you have to call nine-one-one, you want to know who's coming. You know, are these people prepared? Do they have life support systems in some of their vehicles? And so these are the things that are being discussed, you know, how to handle emergencies and what options do we have for our residents? That concludes my report. Thank you.
Jane?
Yes.
That that was a great time Friday night.
Yes, it was.
We really enjoyed it. Uh, the Maggie Moo truck showed up at the last minute. So I was able to get my ice cream before I got soaked on the way over to my truck.
We have to make sure to have the same sort of birthday celebration for you every year.
I'm not gonna say anything there. I'll eat it up, though. But yeah, it it looked like a fun time had by all and and I'm glad we're able to finally do something outside.
Yes.
Again. All right, uh, next on the agenda, municipal authority would be myself. For the last meeting, uh, the I N I program, uh, Equix uh integrity began the phase four uh work on the July thirteenth cleaning and televising in the area of the Coens and Working East. The Cohen property along Route Thirty. It's in the back area is where our pipe is. Uh, and Gilmore is currently working uh putting together the twenty twenty-three phase five interceptor repair project uh bid documents. Uh, and and what this is, just to remind everybody, well, the I N I program is um just sealing up all any leaks in our main interceptor coming down the center of our township. So that way we're not taking in more water and sending and spending more money for treatment just for rainwater coming into our system. So uh, Scott Gill does an excellent job with our wastewater department and uh gotta hand it to him, of course. Uh, but um, uh, this ultimately saves money for the township, getting these uh repairs done. So it's it's been uh it's been a a project in itself, but phase five, I'm not sure if we have a phase six. I think phase five should finish off that interceptor pipe and and then. And then after that, we're gonna go back and start doing the. The laterals that are coming into our our interceptor. So hopefully stop any infiltration. For the DARA CTMA County Township Municipal Authority received reimbursement from DARA for the emergency funds. That we expended back for the twenty twenty one Ida storm event. Since the DARA plant got hit by the storm Ida, there was a lot of damage there, a lot of repairs. But they were reimbursed by their insurance company. But we had to front the cost to get the repairs done, but we have been reimbursed at this point, so. And we'd already discussed the recycling program, but I I also just want to point out recycling. And and I know some of the folks, some of the residents out there may have some issues with the trash hauler. I myself watched the trash hauler come up, pick up my recycled container, shake it a few times, notice nothing's coming out. Finally shook it so much it fell in. The guy got out of the truck, walked around, actually pulled out my my trash receptor and and put it back on the. In front of my property, but sometimes not all the recycled is coming out. I don't know if it's maybe I'm packing in too much or or maybe something with the truck with squeezing it. So if you do run into something or something's missed, just contact the township, let us know so we can let the hauler know. Or, you know, the trash company know so they can deal with it. If they don't know, they don't know what to do. Yes. If you want to step up to the podium, yeah.
I was told.
And it was Jim, right?
Yeah, Jim Happner.
Thank you.
Reed Street. Now I want to know if if they someone wants to clean up their property. Now, do you have to pay a hundred three dollar permit to have a dumpster on your property? Because I know there's a lot of people that because we wanted to get a dumpster. And we told that we had to pay a hundred three dollar permit. And other people saying, no, we didn't have to pay for one and they had one in their driveway. And I like to know, is that true? Is there right now? If I want to get a dumpster put in my driveway, do I have to pay a hundred three dollar permit or not? Because I know there's a lot of people saying.
You don't know?
That they didn't pay one, but when we called, we were told we had to. Because we wanted to get a permit. To clean up around our place and get our house supposedly maybe up for sale. And I could figure why should I mean? If other people, I'm sorry, if other people around us have dumpsters and not paying paying a hundred three dollar permit, I figure why should we have?
Right, right.
I ain't trying to pull that thing again, like I said, why, you know, I mean.
Yeah, I off the top of my head, I'm not quite sure of that. I mean, I I know my neighbors have used Baxter things and and thrown out a lot of stuff and I assume they didn't get a permit, but.
Yeah, we want to get like a Bolinsky dumpster.
Oh, you you want a full, full size dumpster.
Dumpster which with which we have seen in our area.
Thing that large.
And the people told us they they didn't pay the hundred three dollar permit.
They didn't notify the township, I assume.
That is, it is the township. But I got to say, I always wanted to know if it is true or if if we were told wrong.
Okay.
Because we like to get one, that's why.
Oh, oh, okay.
And you should guys should be happy.
Clean up a little bit, hey, yeah, that. It does require.
But the considered a temporary structure.
The bagster does not, right? Okay, so just the little green bag, the big green bag doesn't, but I guess.
Yeah, okay, the big, okay.
Big green bag, yeah, because I know my neighbors use it.
Yeah, I know you talk about that. You don't need a permit, but a big dumpster, you do, okay, no problem.
Okay, and and we'll double check too, just to make sure, but off the top of our head.
No, it does.
It is, okay.
It does.
She's confirmed, okay.
Yeah, there is a thing.
Here up next, too.
Oh, the fire, oh, fire board. I didn't bring my notes. Yet for the fire board. We are discussing finalizing the agreement with the township and the fire board. I think we just have some minor changes for that. Discussing the the budget, which I I think they want to have presented for next month. So we are ready for our budget year. And, oh, and they did. They did reach out to a CPA firm. Yeah, is it? I wish I brought my notes, I I apologize, but they did, they did find a CPA firm that will do the audit for them. So we'll just need to follow through with that, just make sure that is complete since that is part of our agreement. And I think that was it, it was a quick meeting, which was earlier this week. Okay, next historical commission.
Thank you, Paul. Yes, the historical commission met on Wednesday, July twentieth. We had a quorum present and two guests. We heard from all of our subcommittees. Spackman Farm and Marketing and Social Media reported the patch and the CCHPN Ledger had expressed interest in publishing a story on our efforts at Spackman Farm. And today I was notified that Vista Today had a blurb on it. And a link to an article that was in the patch last Friday on Spackman Farm. And the Calen Township Historical Commission, so that's pretty cool. It was also reported that Pierce work has begun on the driveway and parking area. And the King's Highway Master Plan was also discussed. Historical Preservation Subcom reported on the Open Border Commissioner workshops and that it's important that we clarify our classification requirements. Team was formed to do a drive around on August second to visually inspect the resources on our current list. There was a spirited discussion on Lloyd Farm with Tom and Chris Parr sharing a great deal of research. Will be reaching out to CCHPM to do a study of the farm, hopefully in the fall. There are updates on budget, OCHS coordination, July historical tours Buchanan House and a brief discussion on organizations to consider joining. We will not meet in August. Our next meeting is neck is Wednesday, September twentieth at seven P M to kick off with promises to be a very active fall. And we need more members so we can get more done. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. And next Lincoln Highway.
I don't have much to report this this month. We we've taken a little bit of time after working with the school district for several months. We are still Kristen Camp is working with their solicitor to try to finalize that document that they need to pass, the resolution they need to pass. In order for LERTA to pass the school district. And then once we have, we we have ours completed already, once we have the school district, we can approach the county. And the county did get back to Kristen Camp with a very detailed email that of what needs to happen, you know, when and and things like that. So we we're hopeful the school district will act on that in a relative short period of time. And then Mark and I are talk about next steps.
Sound good, Mark?
Sounds great, Josh, you're you're doing an amazing job.
Finishes up our board and commissions, next additional business. No additional business at this time, next public comment. John?
John Asham, I have three things. Hi, Mark. I have three issues I'd like I have questions on. One is Reed Street. Is the sewer being extended on Reed Street anytime soon? Because I heard there was talk of it and there was funding for it.
The stormwater.
No, no, public sewer for Reed Street. I own a parcel up there.
Oh, do you?
And we're looking to develop it sooner to sell it to a developer. And there were talks that there was going to be the sewer main extended up to the actual road itself from the. Partway behind a couple of the houses.
At this point, right now, we are only planning for the stormwater, being that we're gonna be in there with the stormwater. There's a potential that the sanitary may look at doing it depending on costs. But at this point on our end, it's only the the stormwater.
So, okay, I was under the impression there was some grant. Is that the grant for the stormwater?
Stormwater.
Not for the sanitary sewer. Okay, so that's the first thing. The LERTA acceptance by the school district, I know it doesn't apply to residential. Would it apply to age restricted living?
No.
No. Okay, so that brings me to my third question, which is the most important one. And this involves Mark, the historical research impact study you guys were discussing earlier. I was sitting at home listening on my desktop and I didn't have a mic. So I actually got in my car and I came here because what I heard during that discussion was rather concerning. For me because of property valuation, I know I expressed this opinion last time. The determination. You know, you know, there was a suggestion earlier of lowering that standard from the county historical requirements to the Calen Historical Society. And again, I'm all for preserving the building that we own. But at the same regards, you know, I have a large mortgage on that property and I need to be able to do something with that property. We did put it for sale. We had two people come around. One of them was not nothing of genuine concern. The other one was kind of a veterans related application and they were going to preserve the exterior of the building. But then we couldn't come to terms and the hospital shut down, so they kind of disappeared. So. What's being proposed here for this class one and class two is really concerning to me. Because if someone comes along that wants to do work with the building. If they want to expand the building or something on the outside, it sounds like there's gonna be more hoops for them to jump through and it's probably gonna scare them away. And I'm gonna be stuck with a property that I can't make money on because, you know, we did the restaurant thing. We're the longest surviving restaurant there in forty years. And when I caught COVID last year and I almost died from it, I made a huge change in my life and I'm like, I'm done with it. I'm not gonna work like this anymore and spend time with my kids. So, you know, I don't have an interest of reopening that restaurant full time. We're limited to private parties right now. We might reopen in the fall for one or two day, one or two nights a week when my daughter's back in school. But ultimately, we need to find an application for that property because we have a large mortgage on it and we need to either find a use or sell it or something. So. I'm not really on board with that whole idea with that class one and class two. And and someone else mentioned about doing a publication that would show. You know, what the requirements or classifications are for class one and class two and which properties it's going to affect. I'm assuming we're gonna be one of those properties. So I need you guys to work with us to maintain that. Because if we don't and a developer comes along and says, we want to tear it down, I'm gonna say, go for it because I can't hold the mortgage anymore. It's a large, it's a large bill.
But I would, I would say, John, the the one thing that we've added in there is for reuse of the existing structure.
Yeah.
We we just took and added to any zoning district that you can do the litany of items with a hearing in front of the Board of Commissioners. So even if you're in a residential area, you don't, you're not a, you're not a. A use that's not permitted. So I I we can, once we, once Kristen cleans this up and Mark gets the list and we get all that, we'll we'll post the the ordinance. And but the I don't know if you heard tonight, but she she rambled off all the things that you could do interior. With the existing building and structure as it is.
But you also, I mean, to cut you off, I did hear all that. But you also have Ray saying to me that I can only have one use in that building. And that's a big problem because that's a twelve thousand square foot building and there's no single user for it that's gonna make it.
And so we can, we can talk about that, too. You know, that might be something to to address. But and then there is the exemption under five hundred. If somebody wanted to put less than five hundred square feet on, it would be exempt. Am I correct? It be exempt from the historic resource impact study.
Yeah.
Yes.
I did hear that.
Yeah, five hundred square feet for a restaurant isn't much.
Yeah.
No, I I'm just.
No, but I mean.
We realistically, right?
Yeah.
That's an additional.
We have a million dollars invested in this township with that property. You know, we need to get a return on it. It's it's nothing personal, I love the building. But if it comes down to it, I gotta do something with it to get that return and get that money back. So, you know, it scares me those things because it's kind of like you're gonna put our building on on a historical registry. And it's going to restrict what another user can do with it. And ourselves to some degree.
But I I and I'll let Mark speak, but I I think the goal of the historic commission is not to. Make it where somebody can't make the building and let it dilapidate. I think they want to work with you, but they want want it to just look. You know, it to meet the existing look and that's what they're trying to prevent is some, you know, huge modern expansion to it. But I I'll let.
Right.
Or a teardown.
Or a teardown, but I think the the goal of the historic commission is to make these buildings usable, not unusable.
And the the ordinance that we're just discussing right now, like Commissioner Young said, creates many more potential uses for the property. And what you said about. Only being able to do one type of business and at a time is something that we could address in the language of the ordinance. But mainly something like what you own there, the Buchanan House. That was built for President Buchanan, even though he didn't live there. But it was built for him and we have streets named Buchanan, so it it matters and you matter. But someone coming in with the to to knock it down is something that I I don't think any of us want to see happen. Want to see you have whatever kind of successful business you can have in there or have somebody else take it from, you know, buy it from you and do something in there. I don't want to see you suffer, but at the same time, we just, we don't want to see it get torn down. And I don't think you, I know you don't want that because you've been really clear about that. You love that house, so.
Can we put some kind of incentives in there somewhere for development? Tax breaks because we're not in the TV one district that's being rewritten. And that's where the tax breaks are terminating that Geo Carlson with a, you know, as the plan stands. I mean, we extend the TV one down to include our parcel. Then it might be a different shed, a different light on it because now we're LERTA eligible. And now someone that's looking to shelter tax dollars has a reason to think to sink money into that property. So.
I I like that idea. I think the I think that the only trouble we can we could get into with that is that it's the. The Lincoln Highway stretch is considered, what's the word, Josh?
The economic disadvantage zone that there has to be blighted properties.
Bladed properties, that's what it was, yeah.
What's the square footage of the the house?
Sorry?
What's the square footage?
The whole building is twelve thousand square feet.
Twelve thousand?
Pretty big.
What do you have, three floors?
There's a basement and plus three floors.
Okay, does that include the basement twelve thousand?
I think so, because the basement, when Jack Low put the new kitchen on the back end. It's a full height basement, twelve foot high ceilings, all cinder block and concrete and steel.
Okay.
With wa, you know, with egress.
How many entrances? You have the front entrance.
There's the main entrance, there's the portico entrance, there's an entrance on the sunroom, there's.
Basement entrance.
Two entrances on the side by the deck.
Okay.
And there's an entrance on the back by the basement. And there's an entrance behind the main bar. There's an entrance behind the main bar area from the side of the building that faces North Billy Road. As one of the prior users or prior proposed users wanted to build a big deck out there and it was shot down at the time, that's before I was there. So, a lot.
It's a beautiful home, it truly is.
Oh, my God, yeah.
Multi use would be nice.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thanks, John.
Thank you, John.
Public comment? Miss Denny and any in the Zoom world?
No, not at this time.
There's no other public comment, I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved. So moved.
Still moved, second and third, all in favor? Say aye.
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 Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night, everyone.